Tuesday, April 12th. My name is Duncan Berry. This is being held in person. We do have one member, David Harris, who is live on Zoom with us. I'd like to note, first of all, that according to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Is there anybody who intends to make any recording tonight? Good. It's already being recorded. I hereby call this meeting to order, and I would like you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, we will open the public hearing part of the meeting right after I announce our welcome to our newest member, Ann Clark Tucker, who joins us for the first time this evening. And thanks to signing off on the Mullen Rule, is able to join in with our continued case from last time. Ann, would you like to introduce yourself first?
Yes. Thank you very much, first of all. I am a Harwich Court resident. My roots in Cape Cod go back to, I think I was two. So, I'm very pleased to be here and to serve, and I guess I did all my homework and signed that I did it.
Thank you so much, Ann. Look forward to having you with us here now. So, we'd like to begin with continued case number PB 2020-05, the Lawson Family Realty Trust. Judith A. Lonergan trustee is owner. The applicant seeks approval of a six lot definitive subdivision plan. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Chapter 400, Article 2, and Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81-K through GG. Property is located at 98 Northwest Gate Road, MAP 78, parcel G10-3 in the R-R and W-R zoning districts. So, Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, and Ms. Tucker. Thank you for coming tonight. As you've indicated, this was a matter that you began last month and heard the essential presentation on behalf of the applicants, as well as concerns from some of the neighbors about several items. We left with essentially a list of three items that you wanted us to come back and address, and I think you wanted to also give some consideration to yourselves. The first was the issue of whether or not there was going to be municipal water access, municipal water provided to Lot 3 from the main line that'll come in Miskel Drive, rather than have a well on Lot 3. Subsequent to that meeting, the Water Department has been consulted and has determined that they can readily accommodate Lot 3 through the main line that'll come into Miskel Drive. So, there will be a line coming from Miskel across Lot 4 into Lot 3, and the final plan will note a water line easement for that purpose, and it will be reserved in all deeds for Lot 4 and Lot 3. We have not added that in yet. There were several items that Mr. Ideman had suggested that you require us to add to the plan. So, we decided after last time's meeting to wait and get the final list of everything that you want added before we do anything to change the plan itself. So, there's no changes in the fiscal plan tonight for what you had last time. The second item that you had, that the public had concerns about and that you wanted us to come back and address was the question of the alignment of Miskel Drive and its orientation on Northwest Gate Road, and the fact that the lot design standards of your regulations indicate that there should be a 125-foot separation between that intersection and any intersection on the other side of West Gate Road, Northwest Gate Road. It almost aligns with Cahoon Road, but it does not have either a direct alignment or a 125-foot separation. The fact is that we don't have enough land to make 125 feet of separation, so it is impossible for us to do so. But the concerns that were expressed by the neighbors seem to me to have more to do with the design of Northwest Gate Road to the south than with our road or the orientation to Cahoon Road. Concerns were expressed about traffic coming around the curve and over the bend from the south heading towards this direction, in their opinion, safety concerns. After the meeting, Mr. Ideman corresponded with the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Department of Public Works, each got back, and each indicated that, in their opinions, that sufficient safety and design standards to warrant you to do so. None of them expressed precise words into their mouth. I'm sure you've seen their memorandum. But the Works just simply affirmed its prior no comment or no concern response. The Fire Department did likewise. The Police Department actually took the letters, I believe, or used the information from the neighbors, assigned an officer to review their records, and came back with another report indicating that, from their perspective, it did not, this road would not present a sufficient safety or traffic concern to warrant you not approving the subdivision. The last item was the question of whether Squanton Path should be improved from the intersection with Northwest, Northwest Gate to the area of Lot 3, where we propose to have it act as frontage for one of the six lots in the subdivision. You have a letter and a follow-up letter from Mrs. Davis of Number 7 Squanton Path, indicating that, in her opinion, it is not of sufficient width and grade to provide access and frontage for the lots that exist, as well as for the new lot that's proposed. I have, as a result of that, gone out and taken some pictures for you. I'm sure you've seen it yourselves, but if this helps for the record, if I may, Mr. Chairman, these were taken just a week or so ago, when we had a nice sunny day out there. I think you can see that at least the section between Northwest Gate and the area of Lot 3 is a stable, level, graded hardened surface of adequate width for its proposed use. There are cleared shoulders. There have been added stone areas for erosion control on the sides of the road, on both sides. It has sufficient clearance overhead, not to present a problem for emergency vehicles. And in fact, there are utilities already along the road. You can see poles on the right-hand side as you go up the road. I would also note that the board here has, on at least two occasions, already approved Squanton Road for subdivision purposes, as having safe and adequate access for different lots. In 2003, you approved a five lot development that includes Mrs. Davis's house lot, and found at that time, in 2003, that it provided safe and adequate access for those five additional lots. And in 2015, you endorsed another approval, not required, plan for four more lots further to the west, not right in this area, but further down. And at that time, because it's not a public road, you had to have made the determination that it provided safe and adequate access for those four additional house lots. Those approvals were all made before the recent improvements that the road made. They were only made a year or so ago, where the T-base was put down, where the drainage was put on the sidelines, where the road was generally upgraded in that vicinity. Since we're only adding one more house, and you've previously determined that it provided safe and adequate access in its prior condition, we can't see any reason why you wouldn't also come to that conclusion now for one additional house lot. So, we would ask you to approve the plan as proposed with the notations, that it will be modified to include the notes that Mr. Ideman has recommended to you, will correct the reversal of two abutters who we had in the wrong order on the easterly side. And it will include the notations of the waivers that have been requested, to the extent that they are needed and to the extent that you are, see fit to grant them. There's one other item that I mentioned to you last time, and then I assured a neighbor that I would mention again. Mrs. Contonio is the immediate abutter to us on the easterly side. She is on the west side of Northwest Gate, but east of most of our property. She and her attorney had expressed concern about the slope easement, which is right at the entrance to Miskel from Northwest Gate, and a portion of it is actually on their property. But there is a lawful and recorded easement for that slope. We have assured them, and I told them that I would reassure you, that the change in the grade on that slope will cause any runoff to run toward Miskel Drive and its drainage system, and not towards their property, and that in addition, we would revegetate that slope that's disturbed in the process, once construction is completed, in order to stabilize it, and to keep that the way it is. As I indicated last time, we do not anticipate that that will be a formal lawn or landscape area. It will be more naturally revegetated to grow wild, and it won't require any ongoing maintenance or irrigation. That's the hope anyway. So, with that, we would ask you to approve the plan, to approve the two waivers, to the extent that you believe they are necessary, and we'll be happy to respond to any of your questions, or any of the questions from the audience, or Mr. Ideman. And thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, Ms. Ridman. I see you can take your time. You've got a pretty elaborate sub-notes here, so.
Well, I don't know, but elaborate. There's a lot of attachments here. But I did do a follow-up memorandum to the board after the hearing that's on the website as well, and I'll go over some of the same issues Attorney Reed went through, but maybe go through them more as a town planner, rather than, you know, Attorney representing the applicant. Ms. Davis wrote a follow-up correspondence. She's asked that that be read at the meeting. It's really up to you. If you'd like to read it into the record, you know, that's really at your discretion as, you know, in running, in running a hearing. That's on the website. The copy's been provided to all of you. I also just, you know, there's a distinction between the definitive plan layout and the supporting plans, like the Plan and Profile Plan, which have things like details on it. So, I mentioned this last meeting, but I wanted to reduce it to writing in the staff report. Things, you know, I don't believe that any revisions to the Plan and Profile Sheet need to be provided at the time of endorsement. It would be satisfactory that it be provided prior to the commencement of the project. There are certain things that need to be put on the main subdivision plan prior to endorsement, but any changes to that Plan and Profile, really the detail sheet with things like grading and utilities, I don't think need to be provided at the time of endorsement. As was mentioned, there was a transposition of the location of the easterly abutters that needs to be fixed. That's something that should be fixed on the main definitive plan prior to endorsement. One additional condition I wanted to include and, to recommend for inclusion in a certificate of approval, is that all utilities in the subdivision be located on the ground, which is just a requirement, anyway, of the subdivision rules and regulations. And I just wanted to remind you of the time you have, as a general note, to act on the subdivision. It's 135 days unless extended from the time the subdivision application has been filed, in this particular case, because there wasn't a preliminary plan done. So, that 135 days basically takes you to late May 2022. You're not up, you're not running up against time now, you have plenty of time, but I just wanted to kind of make you aware of the time in which you need to render a written decision. The first substantive issue I dealt with to follow up from our last hearing was this issue of traffic safety, which is kind of aligned with this issue of the offset waiver that has been requested, as between the new road, Miskel Drive, and Cahoon Lane, or Cahoon Road, however you refer to it. As requested by you, you know, I sought further comments specifically from Police, Fire, and DPW. DPW reaffirmed no concerns. They sent me an email. That's in your packet. Basically, you know, there are other comments that went along with that, was they're not engineers, they're not in the position to determine road safety. They determine roads, they determine roads are safe for purposes of town assets. So, if they were to do work on a public way, they would ensure probably through consulting engineers that the sightlines and road was safe, but they're not in the position to just opine generally on the safety of roads. The Fire Department, without much commentary, just reaffirmed its earlier comments, no concerns. And the Police Department had lengthier comments. They actually engaged their Traffic Safety Division, specifically Sergeant Josh Garion. He provided me written comments. He echoed that, in his opinion, it's a low-volume, low-speed roadway. And he said, in the last five years, which is really the look-back period they look at for their records, that there have been, that there's no history of accidents or traffic complaints in that area. Another note I wanted to discuss with you relative to this offset waiver is Section 412 of the subdivision rules and regulations. That's a section that deals specifically with road designs for, quote, "new," unquote, roadways. And it uses the term in that section, recommended, recommended standards, or recommended design. That's not to say that the specific guidelines in the subdivision rules and regulations are mere suggestions. But the reason I bring up the word "recommended" is it clearly is pointing to certain circumstances, especially by waiver, where an applicant can point to certain construction or design standards for a roadway that are still appropriate and still reasonable, but may not meet the specific letter of that Table 1, which lays out the specific specifications for things like offset, or layout width, or traveled roadway width. So, I, to me, that was helpful to keep in mind, as I did a deeper dive into the rules and regulations after our last hearing. The next kind of substantive topic was this topic of water service. Both the applicant and I, you know, spoke directly to the Water Superintendent. Big picture is municipal water is clearly available to the development in general, all six lots. And more specifically, municipal water would be available to that Lot 3, which is proposed to front on Squanton Path, not on Miskel Drive. Water can be, municipal water can be provided by taking it where it is currently on the east side of Northwest Gate, under Northwest Gate, up this proposed Miskel Drive, and then over to Lot 3 by way of an easement. So, a couple other conditions I would recommend is that, in a certificate of approval, is that the applicant shall grant or reserve for itself, air, successors, and assigns the utility easement for municipal water services that would be at least 20 feet wide, which is a figure that's cited in the subdivision rules and regulations, over Lot 4, or burdening Lot 4 for the benefit of Lot 3. So, I think that would take care of the issue. And then with that condition of approval, just another note, that the definitive plan shall be revised to show said easement area, and that revised plan shall be provided to the planning board prior to endorsement. So, there's a couple things we would expect, that that easement area is actually shown on the plan prior to, you know, you endorsing it, and there'll also be an instrument of record at the Registry of Deeds, a reservation of that utility easement at some, you know, later time. I would, I would actually think about incorporating it into the subdivision covenant, where you, you hold the lots as security to ensure the performance of later work or later obligations. I'd also suggest a further revised recommended condition of approval. I had in the last staff report, a recommended condition said, that said, "The subdivision shall be served by and connected to municipal water service." I think that condition of approval and that note on the plan, just for clarity, should actually say "all six lots," so there's no confusion about what the subdivision is here. So, "All six lots shall be served by and connected to municipal water service." The last substantive matter really dealt with sort of the sufficiency of Squanton Path to provide access to Lot 3. And I think there may have been some confusion about what I, what my opinion was, so I want to go over it, you know. I guess what you could say is maybe a pedantic way, but I want to be really clear about what my opinion is, so I want to read it from the staff report. "My opinion is that safe and adequate access exists to proposed Lot 3 from Northwest Gate Road over Squanton Path in its current form. Between Northwest, West Gate Road and proposed Lot 3, Squanton Path is graded and surfaced with T-base to approximately 20 feet wide, with informal culvert-style drainage running along the sidelines of this road segment. As a corollary, I believe no further improvement of Squanton, Squanton Path is necessary to provide safe and adequate access to Lot 3. Requiring the applicant to improve Squanton Path along its entire length to Depot Street or any further west than proposed Lot 3 is either beyond the authority of the board or incommensurate with the impacts associated with the proposal, or both. Given that with respect to Lot, given that with respect to Squanton Path, the proposal involves access to only a single new proposed lot, Lot 3. If the board did require additional improvements to Squanton Path between Northwest Gate Road and Lot 3, the board should determine exactly what improvements are necessary, proper and desirable, to provide safe and adequate access to Lot 3, mindful of the potential for increased detrimental, environmental, or aesthetic impacts associated with such work, such as with paving and structured drainage." And some of the things I thought would be helpful to provide you, outside the subdivision rules and regulations, the board actually has a policy from 2009, which in a sense gets at when access might be appropriate that's unpaved, or kind of less than the standards for certain types of lots. And certainly, I think, in this case, that road policy would support keeping Squanton Path in its current condition to serve that Lot 3, especially because you're talking about, in this proposal, one additional lot that would be served by Squanton Path. I think it's also really important, you know, to bring up this argument, as I took a deeper dive in the subdivision rules and regulations. In the subdivision rules and regulations, the standards that deal with road improvements are again, Section 412, are again titled "Road Design for New Roadways." So, there's a legitimate argument about whether those standards even apply to existing roadways, or whether you review the sufficiency of those roadways under your general jurisdiction you have under the subdivision control law, and the specific section in your subdivision rules and regulations that deal with, quote, "safe and adequate access," under which you can look at access for individual building lots, A&amp;R lots, or subdivision lots. So, looking at all this, I would argue to you that your jurisdiction lies in this general sense to determine whether there is sufficient access to Lot 3, rather than determining whether there's sufficient access looking solely through your specific road standards, which seem to deal with new roadways. If that's the case, then there's an argument that a waiver isn't even necessary here, because those standards apply to new roadways. And in this case, the new roadway will, except for offset, meet all those dimensional specifications or requirements in Section 12 and in the appendix to Section 12, such as roadway layout, roadway width. The, 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 the offset won't be met, but things like the horizontal, horizontal or vertical sufficiency of the roadway in terms of its geometries will all be met. So, I think that's something you should, you should think about as well, about whether a waiver is even required in determining whether safe and adequate access exists to that Lot 3 on Squanton Path. And I've also excerpted the section for you that deals with waivers from the design standards for subdivisions to maintain rural, rural character. And again, I think that also suggests that you're talking about perhaps new roadways. Most of the times, in my experience, the planning board, and looking at matters the planning board has decided on over the years, most of the time those waivers are allowed, they are for new roadways. For instance, a two-lot subdivision where a road is being laid out, and for instance, the construction of that road is waived. You may have to actually provide the layout, but the road doesn't need to be paved, the cul-de-sac doesn't need to be improved. That's the sort of fact pattern where this waiver for rural character is usually employed with a new roadway, but again, it's only for something like two lots or three lots, where you really don't need a road constructed to that level to serve two or three lots. So, those are, those are my comments. I'd be happy to discuss them any further, but again, going back to the beginning, Ms. Davis asked if you would read her comments into the record, and I think that's your, your decision to make, probably appropriate to decide or to do that. We get to the public comments section.
Has anybody read Mrs. Davis's? I mean, it's been available for, what, six days now, online and in our packets? And I think we have a lot of people that are actually, that are here to speak, so I'll let this sit on the record for the time being. In the interim, do we have any questions right now from the board for either Mr. Reed or Mr. Ideman? Because if we don't, I think we ought to hear from the public and then come back to that. Is that all right? Very good. If anybody wishes to address the board, please do so by going to the lectern, signing in, announcing your name and your address. A lot of people here.
Hi. So, I came to the last meeting, it was the first meeting I've ever attended here in town. I actually left with a lot more questions than I came with. And my first questions actually are to the engineer. Is he here? No? Okay. So, there's a notation on this, the paperwork, on the actual application itself, talks about the geometry points for the Miskel Drive being at 1 plus 90. So, does anybody know what the actual right-hand turn angle is onto and then off of this proposed drive?
Well, I could find out by taking out the Plan and Profile.
Using a protractor, right?
Yeah. We've had our consulting engineer look at the geometries as well. They're not with us tonight, but if we needed to confirm that.
Because in one place it says it's 90, and the other place in the by-lot says that no roadway shall intersect any other roadway at less than 70. So, unless you're saying that this road is only going to accommodate passenger vehicles, no buses, no construction vehicles, no delivery trucks, then I'm assuming that would have to be, they would have to be signed as such, because otherwise they're not going to make the proposed turn there?
Could you speak into the mic?
Pardon?
Could you move the mic towards you a little further?
Better?
Yep.
How do you know what she's referring to?
The question is, what's the, what are the angle of entry, of insertion of Miskel into?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like almost 90 degrees. What you don't, what you want to avoid is an acute entrance.
Right.
So, I'm not sure how you would read that, but this is a normal geometric design at 90, 90 degrees.
Right. I mean, it doesn't look like a 70-degree angle to me. I mean, maybe part of the apron flares out and, you know.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because they're saying it's a 90, and your by-lot says that it has, it cannot be any less than 70.
Well, it's greater than 70.
Yeah, it's greater than 70.
It's greater than 90. So, it's not, it's not an acute.
Okay. So, so then the accommodation, this is expected to accommodate at the right-hand turn angles, school buses, without crossing the yellow line and going entirely across either direction that's either onto Miskel Drive, that a school bus can make that right-hand turn without crossing the yellow line? And also leaving it? It's not going to have to come the, cross the entirety of Northwest Gate Road?
No. Do you want me to?
Please.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's why these roads are also laid out with a minimum radius at the, at the end. So, yes, I would say a, a school bus could enter the road without taking a turn over on the other side of Northwest Gate and entering Miskel Drive.
Okay. And then in the other, one of the other things that was brought up, obviously, we're here because there's no real legal frontage on Northwest Gate for this at all, so we're here to kind of come up with the next best, safest, and most adequate alternative. So, in looking at that, I did some research just from your website, from the Mass website, and Mr. Reed had brought up the point that when he got the proposal, he assumed that it was going to be more like a straight T-type intersection. And that's not what it is. It also, it's, you guys stuck to the offset from the bound that was made on Cahoon Lane for Miskel Drive. So, in his words, he was kind of wondering why it wasn't more of a T-intersection, and there was discussion about that in the last meeting, because it's more common, it's safer, it's usually what you see versus real offsets. And in his words, it was because the T offset kind of provides vehicles to move either in the same direction or opposite directions without being one on top of the other. But in this case, looking from Cahoon Lane across Northwest Gate to the proposed Miskel Drive site, you could have, from that centerline bound on Cahoon Lane that was created, you could go left, or you could go right, for the offset, which is what the law required, was the offset. So, if they went left, it would have created more of a T-intersection, and it would have been safer. But unfortunately, they can't get there for two reasons. It removes the 400-foot line of sight. proposed, proposed as it is now, and the telephone pole is there, so they can't go left. If they go right, they, with the offset that they have, it, they, they're removed from that almost T-intersection to what they're proposing now. And so I thought, okay, what, what does, what does anything say about the T-intersections? And I in fact looked up a meeting from 2018 where there was a discussion, a similar discussion for the board here in town at that time regarding an intersection proposal, and I have the, the case number if you need it, but the lady that spoke at that time, her name was Charlene, I don't know who she is, never met her, she said that in her 30-plus years of planning and working with the state, the state does want to see a T-intersection for driveways and roads. They want to see direct, directly across the street. They do not want to see offsets, because that's when you invite more accidents. So in this case, we don't have legal frontage, which is why we're all here. We didn't get the, the next and second safest or most adequate access, or what's in the public's best interest. We were given the least. And from previous boards, it's not safe to set this up this way. The other thing that, after Mr. Reed had commented last meeting, that caught my attention was, he had brought it to Mr. Ideman's attention at that time, that he was, assumed we were going to have a T-intersection here, and we don't. And for reasons I just stated, it would be in everybody's best interest to have it be a T-intersection. Mr. Ideman's response to him was that, again, you know, you shall approve it if it's the safest and most adequate, public's best interest, not outside of the intent of use. But he then stated that the other thing that could happen is you just strictly look at Squanton Path. And then you stated that if that happened, sort of in a discriminatory tone, you felt that, you know, because it was, would need drainage and change of drainage characteristic, which I was unsure what that was, and it would need to be paved, it, and the last thing you said was interesting, you said that it would require another process called a betterment, and that would have to go to the Town Board of Selectment. And it would also require the approval of residents on Squanton Path to give up their ownership to the centerline of the road, because it's a private road. So I'm not sure if the betterment processes happened here for Squanton Path, and in this case Cahoon Lane, because, to be honest, Cahoon Lane's centerbound that was created by either, I don't know who created that, but the two gentlemen that came there and fabricated this bound were on my property. And my property is posted for no trespassing. And there was no betterment process that I have been, I have seen, and no one asked my permission to use my property as a bound. And I know that they've asked no one on Squanton Path either. And the other issue that that raises is, if there's no legal frontage on Northwest Gate Road, and you're using private access roads that are owned by those residents, what kind of property is it? And so by definition, a property that has no public access is a landlocked piece of property. And not, considering that none of the betterment processes apply here, have not been done, have not been brought to anybody else, certainly not to us, I'm not sure how you can legally use a bound that you don't have permission to make. Not for me, not for my husband, not from any of the other residents on Cahoon Lane. And in Cahoon Lane's case, we're a part of an association that involves Rogers Road and Shore Drive. And I know that none of them have been notified either. The other question I have about this is because every part of this that talks about new roads or intersections, any of it, again, all only words, the wording here is specifically "public roads, public access, public way." There isn't even language in any of this that I could find, again, on your website, the state website, or the Massachusetts Land Court site, that says that you can even use private roads, private ways for public access, again, without permission. So if that, I'm missing that, and somebody could find that for me, that would be great. The other question I have, because again, I'm understanding that Cahoon Lane is not adequate, obviously, for all of these to be accommodated, and again, because the residents would have to agree to give up their, to, for permission and give up their ownership and, and some easement rights there. Is this property currently listed as private and landlocked in the assessment through the assessor's office here in town?
Mr. Chair, this is, this is unproductive at this point. People should make comments, and then we can move on. There's, there's just been a lot there that...
Why is it unproductive? I'm asking some legitimate legal questions. I thought that was what I was here to get answered. You don't have my permission to even start this process. You, you came onto my property. I, my property is posted, and you allowed either someone from the town to give the approval to Mr. Reed and Mr. Olafman to go ahead and start a process on my private land with no permission given. So I'm asking how that happens, and who gave that permission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Phil.
Phil.
Who went on your property that put a stake in?
I'm assuming it was the surveyors for Mr. Olafman and the Olafman Family Trust, and I'm sure that they didn't do that, because they were told that this plan couldn't be done without permission, so I'm assuming they were given the heads-up from somebody to go ahead and start your process.
Surveyors are probably trying to find out where the lot lines were for the county way or country...
No, they were making the centerline bound that's referred to on this paperwork, the centerline of Tuhcoon Lane, which is my property.
So you're on Cahoon, you're not talking about Squanton? The other thing is, if they took Lot Three...
I, I'm not talking about Lot Three. I'm talking about my property.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you. I don't think the, the planning board has the jurisdiction to oversee whether somebody came onto your property or not, and especially, you don't know who came onto your property, and you're using the word "you," inferring to me that one of us on the planning board...
No, I don't know who it was, that's why...
Okay, well, we don't either.
Yeah.
And so that's not relevant to the conversation here.
What is relevant, though, is that you're using my property as a part of this proposal, and no one has permission to do so.
It's just simply not true, Mr. Chair.
How is it not true?
I, I think everybody should make their comment. This is the appropriate time to make comments, and then, right?
So can I read this to you? Because you list my property numerous times, my property, that I have a deed to. And somebody, somebody either, I'm, I'm assuming it's the Olafman Family Trust, used my property as a centerline bound to create this entire proposal.
Mrs. Walker, I, I think that if you believe that to be the case, you need to find that out as a fact.
I know it for a fact, you're, it's in your proposal.
Surveyors can do that any, this is why I don't want to get into this. Surveyors can do that anyway, but we don't want to get into a treatise on Mass General laws about what's allowed or what's not allowed. We're talking about a subdivision tonight. So that's why I don't want to get into all of this, because it's kind of a...
So wait a minute, can I just be clear? I'm, I'm not talking about your subdivision, I'm talking about the basis on which this entire subdivision was proposed. It was proposed by the creation, which was needed in this case, because you're asking us to approve, to, to accept a waiver, because you don't have legal frontage on Northwest Gate at all. That's why we're here.
I think the premise is that the, this was generated internally with the geometries of the land tract inside the boundaries.
And the boundary that's being used is mine.
The angle of the road, the insertion of that road on Northwest Gate has more to do with, if you'll look at the diagram, the properties of the subdivision slot lines, unless with the external properties of the angle of the road, or any point on a radius of that curve of that road outside of those, those lines. That's my understanding. So there's not, I mean...
So let me just ask this.
These are kind of...
So what is, what is the, what is your understanding, then? Because the way that this reads, the bound that was used to create the offset, the bound that was created to make the offset for this proposal.
Right. That's, but...
You used my property...
We did not use...
Okay, somebody, then, okay. So let me re, let me reword it, then. You're looking at a proposal that someone was allowed to use my property as a bound to create the offset required for this waiver. And I never gave permission for anybody to use my property as a bound.
Again, I don't think that there's... Right, I, I don't think that there's anything that we have to do with the use of your property or the discussion of your property, or, uh, those are just simply not, not our concern. I mean, I don't, it doesn't see, I don't want to sound like I don't care, I mean, I would be concerned, too. I live on 28th, I get people moving on my property all the time. I get people going to length and width of my property.
It's not about, it's not about anybody coming, it's not about anybody accessing the property.
It's the internal coherence of a project, and it's, it's fitting or not fitting to the legal, um, the strictures of the code of Harwich in terms of whether or not it fits that. Now, outside of that, your concern seems to be genuine, and, you know, I think there's genuine concern about that.
Right.
But that doesn't fit with the nature of the conversation about what, what we're dealing with.
Okay, so then why was it necessary in the last meeting that if Squanton Path was going to be used, that the betterment process that Mr. Ideman brought up was going to have to be done first, and get the permission from those residents?
That was a contingency, if there were, there were multiple moving parts in that conversation about Lot Three. I don't mean to speak for you.
But this, this is exactly the problem, so I, by responding to an incorrect statement, you're basically confirming the statement. When I brought up betterments, it was not in relation to Squanton Path at all, it was in relation to Cahoon Lane, Cahoon Road, that entire network of roads over there, that it isn't up to subdivision standards, and if it doesn't have the appropriate drainage and they're suffering problems, there's basically a funding mechanism that the town provides through Chapter 255 of the Town of Harwich bylaws to perhaps pay for that. Fifty percent of the residents have to agree to that, and then a betterment can be spread, uh, you know, over time through taxes.
Right.
It was, in a sense, superfluous, but was try to provide some sort of solution to some of the road woes they might be experiencing over in that network of roads. But it had nothing to do with Squanton Path, and I just, I really think at this point, you've heard the comments, it's, this can't be a question and answer period.
And we also have your emails on file as well.
Okay. And, and do they, did the pictures that I sent to Ms. Banta also come through?
They're all, all here, yeah. Well documented.
Okay.
I've got them right here. So, but...
Okay, and is that regarding the way that already exists?
Everything that you submitted to the board, that we've had almost a week's review...
And those are from, and those are from the March 25th? Is that what the second email is that I sent?
The 27th and March 25th.
Right. And so an A and R or anything was not required for that road to be created there either?
Again, that's not what we're meeting on.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we could discuss all sorts of...
So then it's legal for people to use your property for public access bounds, even if it's a private road?
We're not talking about that.
Mr. Chairman? Mrs. Walker, it sounds to me, I'm not an attorney, but it sounds to me like you have an issue about somebody trespass, trespassing on your property.
No, that's not really what I meant.
You continue to say, someone came on my property without my permission.
So then let me re...
To me, that's, again, not an attorney.
Right.
That sounds like you have an issue that someone trespassed on your property. This is not the proper form.
No, that's not what I'm, that's not the point I'm trying to make, and, and I'm not sure, obviously, I'm not saying it appropriately enough, but if this needed a bound, this offset and for this waiver required a bound, and in, in the application, you don't have it, so you're requesting the waiver based on 40 feet from 125, but they needed to create a bound, and there is no bound on legal frontage within that space to, to create the bound that they needed to get the offset. There was nothing on Northwest Gate that they could use as the nearest intersecting bound, there was nothing in that area at all. So what they needed was to create a bound to get to the offset they're asking for. And the, the use of the, where they created the bound is not on public access, it's on private property.
And again, I say, if you're concerned about someone trespassing on your private property...
I'm not concerned about the trespassing.
You continue to bring it up, and it is not an issue...
I'm not concerned about the trespassing, I'm asking, is it legal for them to use private property to make a bound?
We're not a court of law, and we're not a...
Well, it's in the bylaw. It, it, where, that's what I'm saying, where in the bylaw does it say that?
Mr. Chair, it's simply a mathematical difference. It's measured between the centerline of one way and the centerline of another way. It has, if there's, if there's a bound involved, it's merely incidental.
Right.
Well, is it incidental? Because in none of, none of the bylaw does it say that private roads, doesn't say, there's no place in here that it states private roads are used for bounds or anything else. It's all public access, public way, the nearest adjacent public way, the nearest adjacent public road. There's nothing about private at all. I mean, look at, look at, you can, I can go through this in several different places. It's all public way intersection, it's all nearest adjacent public way, not private.
Mr. Reed, do you want to say?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't there when Ms. Warner and her crew did the fieldwork to create this plan, but from looking at the plan and, and listening to Ms. Walker, I think there's simply a misunderstanding as to what surveying consists of and what we're proposing. We are not proposing to use any of her property for this development. We did not, as far as I know, create any bounds on or near her property. What the surveyor did, based upon what's in the plan for you, is locate the existing bound, so that we knew where we are in relation to her property. And the bound in the middle of Cahoon Road, nearest her property, is shown on the plan as an existing monument. And I think that's the extent to which anything was done on or near her property. We're not asking for any of her rights to be affected in any way to her property or to her rights of way, either in the public road or in Cahoon, which is a private road. We, and, and the repeated statement that we don't have legal frontage on Northwest Gate Road is simply incorrect. I think, again, she's perhaps taken out of context the discussion between whether we have legal frontage on Northwest Gate and whether we have sufficient land to offset 125 feet. Those are two different things. And I agree that we don't have enough to, to offset by 125 feet. But I would also agree with Ms. Walker about the comments you found in the 2018 decision or discussion, where what appears to have been Charlene Greenhalgh, who was your planner at the time, mentioned that from the state's point of view, they prefer roads to align, not to be offset where they can. Your, the discussion about what I assumed early on, I think she's transplanting my discussion about my assumption about your regulations. My assumption was, as I said to you last time, that you would prefer to have roads aligned, so that they were not turning conflicts. But that the only thing mentioned in your recommended design standards was an offset. There's no mention of alignment, only the offset, and the offset being a minimum of 125 feet, so there aren't conflicts as each one turns. But I think she's correct in, in, in pulling out the comment from Ms. Greenhalgh, that it is from an engineering perspective better to have roads aligned where they can, to avoid those conflicts. And we had that discussion last time, and I think Mr. Ideman tended to agree, or at least the, the engineers that you consulted with to review this plan, had no concerns that they voiced about the offset or about the alignment of these two roads. So I, I think respectfully, Ms. Walker has misunderstood some of our comments, and perhaps some of Mr. Ideman's.
Yeah.
And, and placed too much emphasis on some comments that really don't relate to what we're asking for from you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. May anybody else care to address, thank you, Ms. Walker, anybody else care to address the board this time? Okay, questions from the board? Dave Harris, we can't see you, but I'm assuming you're still there.
Yes, I'm still here, and I have no comments.
Okay. What's the wish of the board? No comments? No comments? So, well, it seems to me the matters that were brought up by Mr. Reed have been addressed here by the planner. I think there's been questions that are, you know, point to a, the issue about the offset that are of concern. I think that we looked at the police department traffic safety issue at some detail last time, and then again at this time with updates in the reports. I think we've got a lot of information here. I don't know what more kind of inputs we need. It's very clear that there are some safety concerns in the neighborhood. But we haven't heard further from them, so.
Would you like a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'm looking for either, yeah.
Could I just mention?
Please.
I would like you to have a conversation about the necessity of a waiver on Squanton Path.
Right.
And bringing up that particular issue. I think it could fairly, there's some ambiguity there. It could fairly be read both ways.
Right.
But I think it's worth that sort of discussion about whether your ability to review that and determine the sufficiency of the roadway just goes back to your kind of native jurisdiction over safe and adequate access or whether, in this case, you need to grant the waiver to determine whether they're safe and adequate access. But I'll remind you, the section specifically says roadway designed for new roadways.
Right. And is there any question whether or not this is an existing road?
Squanton Path?
Yeah.
No question whatsoever. It's a very old roadway.
Right. So why are we having the discussion about the new road issue? That's my question.
Well, the waiver was requested.
Right.
Yeah, I think as a belt and suspenders.
So it's a, okay, all right.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
On the waiver? I'd make a motion that we accept the request, the application for a waiver. And so that, as you said, Mr. Ideman, so that we have the belt and suspenders. Recognizing that, according to the reading of the regulation, this is not, or understood that Squanton is not a new road. And so therefore, a waiver is not required. But since one's been requested, and we can do the belt and suspenders approach, I think it would be appropriate.
Do we boil that down to one sentence?
Well, I mean, you could just, in my first staff report, if you wanted to have a, you know, a model motion, it would be to adopt the recommended findings and approve the definitive subdivision based on the recommended findings and conditions from the staff report stated March 16th, 2022, and April 7th, 2022. Approve the subdivision plan and the requested waivers for offset and rural character of, offset for Miskell Woods and rural character for Squanton Path.
Is that your motion?
So you'd be approving the subdivision and the wa, those two waivers at the same time. You'd also be adopting those recommended findings and conditions from those two staff reports, March 22nd and April 7th.
Is that your motion, Craig?
Do we need to close the public hearing?
I said, I said, put, close the public hearing. You don't, you don't necessarily need to do that like you do with a special permit because basically the timeline you have to act is inclusive of hearing and decision period. So you don't have to, have to do that. It's, it's almost better not to do that in case, for some reason, you want to get back into public session.
Right.
Okay. I would amend my motion then to read as Jonathan just stated.
Wait a second. Any further discussion? David, any discussion?
No.
Then let's do a roll call vote. David Harris?
Aye.
Ann Tucker?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our.
Mr. Berry, can I just, so one, there are a number of different things that have to be added to that. That's the old MYLAR, so if you could use that. But that'd have to be added to the MYLAR. And the appeal period collapses if it's without appeal. We'll expect a MYLAR with those changes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
But also, before we move on, I want to thank also for the participation of the people that are butters, neighbors. You definitely were heard. I appreciate you taking the time and the research. Thank you very much. Second item is this evening for case number PB 2020-08, Aaron Gingras. Owner applicant seeks approval of use special permit for alternate access via Woody Glen Road pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51 and 325-18K. Property is now known as 140 Oak Street. Assessors ID 60-R3 in the RM zoning district. Good evening, Paul. Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm doing fine.
Good.
Paul Sweetser and Aaron Gingras. You have in front of you a plan that was by Stephen Haas. It shows a proposed location of a house. And the idea that we would like to take the access of Woody Glen versus Oak Street. Woody Glen is absolutely the better route to go to get to the house. You have some of the same issues as far as construction goes, going from Oak Street to, or Woody Glen. But Woody Glen is less congested, and it's public. It's a just a better way to go. Kind of make it short and sweet.
That's pretty short and sweet. Mr. Town Planner?
Yeah, I prepared a staff report. I have no concerns, as you remember. This was filed with the planning board. I did have some concerns at that time. I felt that the Board of Appeals had to establish this as a building lot first. They granted that relief, they granted that approval. This is clearly the superior access to the property. It would avoid the disturbance of trees or the natural topography along Oak Street. We had strong comments from our fire department that they accessed the property from Woody Glen, which is an approved public way rather than Oak Street. There's no sort of special conditions of approval I'm recommending here, just the standard conditions, that the decision be recorded and that the decision be exercised within the required two years. That's all.
Very good. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, any questions from the board?
I have none.
No questions? Mr. Harris?
No.
I'll take, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion, close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second. Take a vote, Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Barry, aye. So do I have a motion with the determinations?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept Woody Glen. Is it Woody Glen?
You can, you can read the recommended motion on page two of the planning comment.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Make a motion that we accept case number PB 2022.
It's 08, I've made a, it's actually 08, 2022 08.
08. Aaron Gingras, owner applicant seeks approval of use special permit for alternate access via Woody Glen Road pursuant to Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51 and -18K. The property is now known as 140 Oak Street, assessors ID 60-R3 in the RM zoning district, and recommend the following conditions of approval: that the proposed access for the subject property shall be undertaken and maintained consistent with the plan referenced in the application materials set out above, and the decision shall run with the property. This decision shall not be effective until it is recorded by the Barnstable County Register of Deeds.
Any further discussion? Take a vote, Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Oh, wait, sorry, we need a second, sorry. I'm running ahead here. We got a second, okay. Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Ann Tucker?
Ann Tucker, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third item for the evening for public hearing is case number PB 2020-09, Charles River Laboratories, Inc. Applicant and potential SE seeks approval of a use special permit for scientific research and development pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51A. Property location is 185 Queen Anne Road. Assessors ID 58-F1-2 in the I-L zoning district. Attorney Kroll, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port here this evening. And I'm representing Charles River Laboratories, Inc. I have seated with me on my left Greg Marshall, who's the general manager of Charles River. And on my right is Jamie Bassett, who is a commercial fisherman from Chatham. He's had his commercial fisherman's license for 30 years and would be one of the harvesters of horseshoe crabs in the process. The property is located at 195 Queen Anne Road in the industrial zone, the IL district. It abuts, to the rear of it, the Harwich disposal area. It's on the south side of Queen Anne Road. The applicant has a lease with 195 Queen Anne Road LLC, which is the owner of the property, so they've leased three units as a facility for this project. There are two industrial buildings. The one in the rear is finishing construction at this time. And the two buildings were constructed pursuant to Planning Board Decision 2020-24, which approved the site plan for the two buildings and the property, the parking, the septic, the stormwater, and drainage. That was all previously approved by this board. The project is being submitted this evening pursuant to the table of uses in our bylaw, which allows for scientific research or development. And that's allowed by special permit from the planning board as long as we meet certain conditions. And so land use special permit, it does not necessarily have any bearing on what the actual use is as long as we meet the conditions or what the process might be. So the conditions are for the special permit under our bylaw that the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, number one. Number two, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. Number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Number four, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. In the narrative that was submitted with this application by Charles River, which I assume you all have had, all have a copy of and had a chance to review, I'm not going to belabor points. I don't want to reread that entire narrative. I just want to highlight a few things as they relate to the four conditions that I just read. But basically, what's being proposed is a facility to extract blood from horseshoe crabs for LAL tests for endotoxins for injectable drugs in the pharmaceutical industry for humans. And I believe it relates to some of the COVID vaccine, vaccines as well. As far as the, the actual operation, Charles River is proposing that this be a year-round use up and down, as we all are with the seasons on the Cape, and that normal business operations would be between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM on Monday, Monday through Saturday. Keeping in mind, this is the industrial zone. This is where we want all these things to take place. And they would request permission to have expanded hours if need be, if the board saw fit, to grant that flexibility. They anticipate hiring 20 to 25 mainly local employees. And those employees would be organized into shifts with staggered arrival and departure times. So they would not all be there at the same time. So there's no parking concerns, traffic congestion, things of that nature. So there's sufficient parking, as this board found in approving the site plan previously. The horseshoe crabs that would be received at the facility would come from locally licensed harvesters, such as Jamie Bassett on my right, who has the appropriate license. And all of them would have the appropriate license to harvest the horseshoe crabs. And the, they would be delivered to the facility, the blood extracted through all of the carefully designed processes that Charles River already employs in Charleston, South Carolina. So they're looking to diversify their operation to a, to a certain extent here. And then same day, and Mr. Marshall will elaborate on more of the science of this, but same day, these horseshoe crabs would be returned by the fishermen, the harvesters, to their, to the habitat from which they were extracted earlier that day. If it's at all physically possible to do so. If it's not, they would be maintained at the facility at ambient temperatures to make sure that they survive to the following day. So that's the process that basically that would take place at the facility. We believe it's an appropriate site because, as I say, it's located in the industrial zone. There would be no adverse impact on the neighborhood, which is the third condition of, for the special permit. Since except for loading and unloading horseshoe crabs, all of the operations would be, would take place inside of the building. So there would be basically pickup trucks six to eight times a day delivering, the pickup may be a trailer behind it, appropriately sized trailer, or a boat trailer to deliver the horseshoe crabs. There's a, would be a small forklift, approximately 5,000 pounds, that would offload the horseshoe crab, et cetera. And that would be it. That's all you would see and hear at this facility. So contention is it would be, that traffic would be less than maybe some other business, a contracting business, a landscaping business at that site. It would be less traffic, no nuisance, no serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians as set forth in our bylaw. As far as environmental impact, it would not create any hazardous waste, hazardous solid waste, or hazardous wastewater. And no, no such materials would be stored at the facility that would be classified as hazardous materials. So there's no nuisance created there in this, in this process. There would be no airborne particulate matter or noticeable odor coming from the facility. Rubbish and recycling would be, would be placed in designated receptacles and removed by a contracted trash removal company. And it would be inside the building an industrial groundwater holding tank to collect any non-hazardous horseshoe crab waste that would have to be separated out and removed and disposed of. I'll speak after, after Mr. Marshall does. But I'll turn it over to Gregory Marshall, the general manager, to talk about the process a little bit more in depth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, Attorney Kroll. He did a very nice job of explaining what we do. So I'll just add a little bit more to what our attorney just mentioned here. So again, my name is Greg Marshall. I'm the general manager of the microbial solutions division of Charles River Labs. Charles River Labs is a Massachusetts-based company that's been in business now for 75 years. Their headquarters is based in Wilmington, Massachusetts. So personally, I grew up here in Massachusetts, vacationed my whole life here on Cape Cod, so I'm very familiar with the Cape and absolutely love Cape Cod. We are really pleased to be considered to establish operations here in the town of Harwich. We have looked at several sites on the Cape. We chose Harwich. We just thought that it, it had everything that we were looking for. Very excited to partner here with Jamie Bassett and his partner, Matthew Belson. They're both locals. Jamie will speak here in just a minute. It's also worth noting that we have full approval from the marine fisheries division of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to process horseshoe crabs in the state of Massachusetts. I guess I won't go over, you know, I can get into more technical details if you'd like about, you know, the amazing qualities of the blood of the horseshoe crab and, and why it saves lives. I'm happy to do that. But, yeah, I would like to mention that we are only one of four companies in the world that's been approved by the FDA to provide this lifesaving product to the biopharmaceutical industry, and we are the only US-based company, meaning the only US-owned company that provides this valuable product to the biopharmaceutical industry. So for example, when we talk about the COVID-19 pandemic, we supplied around 55% of all the tests globally from our Charleston, South Carolina facility to test all of these vaccines. There was worry when the pandemic began whether or not, you know, we would have enough supply. We ramped up our production, and we were able to, to meet the demands of the pandemic. And again, being a US-based company, you know, there's been legislation enacted that really wants to attract and, and keep US-owned companies here in the United States manufacturing these very important lifesaving products. I guess with that, I would like to introduce you here to Jamie Bassett. He'll talk a bit more about the process and how we'll be partnering with them.
Thank you. Members of the planning board, thank you very much for, for having us here tonight. We greatly appreciate your time. My name is Jamie Bassett. I, just a little bit of background, I was born and raised in Chatham by my grandparents. I'm here, went through the Chatham school system. I'm here with my partner, Matthew Belson. He is a resident of Harwich, lives stone's throw from this town office, and has, has raised his family here, and is a resident taxpayer. I'm also a taxpayer in Harwich. We, we own a business in Chatham. We started it a couple of years ago in, as a, what's called a, a wholesale seafood operation where we deal in primarily hard shell stock, and we are licensed by the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, and we are also the only, what's called shucker packer on Cape Cod. A couple of years ago, we took part in a, a program where we shucked 70,000 oysters, and that was a, that was a long couple of months. But we are the only licensed shucker packer, and we are subjected to four inspections per year, and we're also HACCP approved, and that is an acronym for Hazard Analysis Critical Control Point. So we, we are looking at our second inspection by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health in probably a couple of weeks, and we are also on the, what's called the ISSL, which is the Interstate Shippers List in order to do interstate commerce. So a little, just a little bit of background about our, our company. We, we're happy that we survived through the majority of the pandemic, and we're happy to be here tonight. And we are, part of our, part of our business was the, was the, the purchasing of horseshoe crabs already. There is a, I'm not sure if any of you may be aware, but there is what's called a conch fishery, and that relies heavily on, on, on baits, whether it be green crab or swordfish remains, and, and horseshoe crabs are one of those, one of those baits of choice for that fishery. And so we, we harvested, or we, we took in horseshoe crabs. The Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries has a, has a quota of 165,000 horseshoe crabs that is allowable to harvest each year. They normally reach, they've been reaching probably about 95 to 96% in the last several years. And the unfortunate part about, about that is that these horseshoe crabs are, they go directly to a freezer, and the mortality rate on that for both females and males is, is 100%. And so we were thrilled to be able to have a potential partnership with Charles River Laboratories where we could focus more on a blue, a blue economy and, and return the horseshoe crabs back into their native habitat, which is, which will, which would primarily be Nantucket Sound, but it is, the state of Massachusetts has, has a variety of, it's a number system. When you harvest shellfish, there's a harvest area that's specific, and it's in order to maintain public safety in case there was some sort of outbreak, for example, a vibrio outbreak from, from oysters, you would be able to know exactly where they came from. But those also, harvest areas serve a purpose to be able to return the horseshoe crabs back into their native habitat where, from where they were taken. So we were thrilled to be able to have the possibility of moving out of the bait industry and into a more sustainable market. My partner and I, we are also partners in a Chatham kelp, which we started from scratch about seven years ago, and it's starting to go well. So we try to, we're trying to look for sustainable fisheries, and this is, is an excellent opportunity to take these, take horseshoe crabs and use them for a, a better purpose and be able to give them a round-trip ticket instead of a one-way ticket. So I would be more than happy to try to answer any questions that you may have in regard to what the process may be and, or any other thing that you may be wondering about.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up. I, I think it's important to remember a couple of things this evening about the, this process with this board. This board has the authority to grant a special permit for this land use at this site. So regardless of whether you agree, one agrees ideologically with the process, the permit we're seeking is not relevant to that. It's relevant to the four conditions that are outlined in the bylaw and whether or not the uses, the use would be adverse to the neighborhood. It's in the industrial zone. I think we pointed out that there would not be an adverse use or an effect on the neighborhood, and it's an appropriate site. This is what the bylaw allows is scientific research or development in the industrial zone. So the town's already anticipated something like this and said by special permit from this board that it can be granted. I think the site is appropriate. This building is appropriate as outlined, and as you saw on the plans that were submitted, and there would be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and we've provided adequate and appropriate facilities. This is a copy of the permit that I believe you've seen, issued by the Division of Marine Fisheries to Charles River Laboratories for, it's a horseshoe crab biomedical dealer letter of authorization dated April 7, 2022. I learned a new term in this process, which is economic multiplier. So if this use is allowed, there will be many local folks employed, 25 to 30 employees plus the local harvesting fishermen. So it will have a positive effect on the local economy, and I think that Harwich is an ideal location for this type of thing because of its connection with the ocean and with the fishing industry. It just makes all kinds of sense to me that this is what you would want to have in, in the town of Harwich, and now partnering it with medical and technological connection as well as the ocean and, and fishing industry connection, I think is, it's just, it's a really good fit, and as Mr. Marshall said, he wants to partner, they want to partner with the town. Finally, just a reminder to this board that, as Mr. Ideman pointed out, in granting a special permit, if you see your way to do that, it takes a five to nothing vote tonight. We have to have five of you, and there's only five of you voting in our favor in order to grant the special permit. These folks have a timetable. They want to get up and running by mid-May, so a positive vote this evening would be a really good result for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Mr. Ideman.
Thank you. I provided you a staff report. Frankly, I think a lot of the issues you'd otherwise look at in a special permit have effectively been taken care of because of the recent site plan special permit that was approved in 2020, 2021. The site is still under construction. The building is still under construction, but it's getting very close, and they're proposing to take three of the, the five, five units. It's also somewhat helpful that this building is in the back of the property, which might alleviate any queuing or anything like that on the roadways in front on Queen Anne Road. 24 spaces were approved under that site plan review. Interestingly, the use that was recognized in the site plan special permit was a kind of a warehouse or general construction use. Those uses actually have higher parking and loading needs than this use. So by this occupying three of those five units, at least according to that section of the bylaw, the parking needs are lessened. There are fewer parking spaces necessitated. So I think many of those issues have already been taken care of, but I'll, I'll get back to that with the sort of special condition I'm recommending. Attorney Kroll is absolutely correct. What's before this board is, is a, is a land use permit dealing with site-specific impacts and any impacts there may be to the surrounding properties. I struggled a little bit with the building commissioner about what to, what to call this use. There actually is another use in the zoning bylaw called fish processing, which is allowed in the zoning bylaw, and it's allowed by right. Kind of interestingly and curiously, if the fish, if that fishery had been killed and packaged and cut up, it would be allowed by right. There would be no special permit here. We decided it was more akin to research and development. We also erred on the side of caution to send this to the board for some sort of public review as well. Even though this is in the industrial district, and in the industrial district, research and development is allowed by special permit, that's presumably because with certain research and development, there may be special security issues or, or issues associated with biomedical hazards or bio-organic compounds or, or mixtures with certain uses. As I understand this project, those are not present in this particular use. I think the, the specific land use you're looking at is bringing crabs to the site, the removal of their blood, and the, taking the crabs back to the live, the waters in which they came. So that, that's probably the land use you should, the lens you should look at this project through. And then it's almost, our special permit uses in the zoning bylaw are almost considered what other bylaws consider conditional uses. So subject to meeting certain conditions, the board would approve the, the project. And the conditions, you know, you heard them, they tend to be things like the relationship of the proposed use to the surrounding properties. You know, is the location of the proposal an, an appropriate location? Is the use and development compatible with other uses and development? I think the, the answer really becomes yes. The industrial district is exactly the sort of district you want to locate uses that other, that otherwise aren't appropriate, especially near residential uses. You know, in terms of the hours of operations or the trucking, that sort of thing. So, you know, I'm, I'm recommending that you approve this project, given that backdrop, but really about what's before you. It's important to me that there's this existing special permit and site plan because I, is a special condition of approval. I'm recommending to you that that really needs to be closed out. There's a, as-built site plan that's required, there's a certificate of completion that's required. Those things should be done before any sort of occupancy or commencement of this use or, or the issuance by the building official of a certificate of use and occupancy for this project. So that's really kind of where I focused on this. This use really depends heavily on what's already been approved because there's very few site changes or building changes proposed. I don't think anything on the outside or in the site, basically the changes to the site are interior and its interior fit-out. And I, there is a plan, if you can read it, of the proposed, you've gotten a copy, but that's the proposed floor plan. And, you know, they rely on the locations of the overhead doors and that sort of thing. So I think that another criteria for the board to look at for a special permit is whether there are appropriate facilities in place. So I think what the board has already approved and is under construction provides those appropriate facilities for you to, one of those things defined favorably on a, on a matter like this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but, you know, my recommendations are in the staff report recommending approval, subject to conditions. I have one special condition. The other conditions are the standard conditions about, you know, recording the, the decision and that sort of thing.
Very good. Do we have any questions from the board?
So related to this special use under research and development, am I correct in reading this that this material is used as part of the approval of the vaccine manufacturing process?
It is used both in the, the manufacturing process and in the early development process when they're testing, they're making their formulations, they have to test it using our product, also during the R and D phase as well.
Do I understand a vaccine, the, how the manufacturing is done is approved as well as the vaccine itself, correct? And you're, you're part of that first part?
So our, our customers
Yeah.
will use our product in their process when they're going for approval because they need to make sure that it's always safe, whether they're in the
It's replication.
Yeah, whether they're in the R and D phase or the manufacturing phase.
Right, so you're a part of that. That's how the FDA is involved in your product. Is that correct?
Well, the FDA
Your customers are, is that correct?
They, they give us, the FDA gives us a license
Right.
to manufacture the product
To these standards.
and sell the product.
Yeah.
Okay, to both R and D organizations and, and it's used by quality control, whether it's an R and D or manufacturing. But it's the FDA that gives us the, the license to manufacture and sell to these, all these different biopharmaceutical companies.
Okay, that makes sense. And just one more point of just clarification under this research and development, is this the only place you find this material in horseshoe crabs?
Yes. There, it's the only place where you can get this LAL, this limulus amoebicite ly It's the only place where you can get this LAL, this limulus amebasite, okay, which has special properties, which is an anticoagulant.
Right, but it's only horseshoe crabs.
It's only horseshoe crabs. Now, there are companies that are developing, are in the process of developing. We're also in the process of developing and doing a lot of research on a synthetic version. But it has not been approved by the FDA. It's still very much under development.
So that makes it this special permit under research and development very clear and very obvious. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Ideman?
Just following up with you, Ms. Tucker. So my understanding is that you don't manufacture the end product here, is that correct?
That is correct.
You withdraw the blood. So I think that's an important distinction to make. I don't know if you were kind of heading there with your question or
It's the extraction of the material. It's only found in horseshoe crabs, and it's part of the FDA manufacturing approval process to make vaccines work.
So consider it a raw material that's, we use to do the manufacturing in Charleston, South Carolina.
Any other questions?
I have only wash waste. Does that go into a central septic system or goes into holding tanks and removed? Neither?
Please.
I'm sorry, this is Tag Glenn who also works with Charles River. Can you answer that question?
If you could use the mic, that would be great.
Hi, Tag Glenn. So we are not putting anything into the septic tank or capping a holding tank that is underneath there, not using that at all. We're going to be professionally, we're engaging with Wind River Environmental to come and take away the non-hazardous byproduct that we're creating anyway. So it's non-hazardous to begin with, but we're also housing it professionally removed. Yes.
Craig, do you have any questions? David Harris.
No questions.
Did he say no?
He said no.
So I have a couple of questions. I'm curious, you know, knowing a little bit about having been certified myself about 20 years ago and seeing what happens in seafood processing. What happens when you get outside of that? First of all, are all of the horseshoe crabs coming from the south shore? It's like, so the, from the Elizabeth Islands all the way to Chatham kind of a thing? Or just are you doing all of the sound or, I'm just out of curiosity?
Sure, thank you for the question. I'd be happy to try to answer that. So the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries issues a, they issue two licenses. They can either issue a bait license or a biomedical license for biomedical collection. And the horseshoe, and it's a state license. So the horseshoe crabs are harvested in state waters. So it could be, and that's
So the entire coastline, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Second question. What happens when you start going outside of that 36-hour turnaround time? I would imagine it starts getting pretty fragrant.
So in our experience with working with, so first of all, the stipulations by the Division of Marine Fisheries and also a, what was called an ad hoc working group for biomedical horseshoe crabs that encompassed several states. They met in 2011 to form and create a best practices guideline for the handling of horseshoe crabs. And specifically, one of the stipulations was a certain timeline that these horseshoe crabs needed to go back into the water so that the animals were less stressed. We attended an April 1 meeting hosted by the Division of Marine Fisheries just this past April 1. And, you know, they reiterated the timeline. And so barring adverse weather, there, we see no issue for getting these horseshoe crabs back in the water. That is part of the stipulations of the licensing. If there is a southwest wind blowing at 25 miles an hour in Nantucket Sound, that would be difficult. However, that is one of the reasons that, you know, we will have, you know, local harvesters with intense local knowledge that may be able to travel behind the lee of a sandbar. But in the worst-case scenario, if there was some sort of sustained wind where made unsafe conditions to travel in the sound, the horseshoe crabs would be, and in my experience, that has been a maximum of, you know, their maximum of maybe, maybe 48 hours, sometimes three days, but the wind tends to die down here and there. They would be kept in what are called saplast insulated vats that are used in the commercial fishing industry. That are, that was one of the things that we, that is, that we proposed in the operating plan to the Division of Marine Fisheries, that we would transport the horseshoe crabs in those food-grade HACCP-approved vessels with lids to maintain a temperature. There are very strict temperature controls. There must be very strict also records. We have a very sophisticated, due to our dealings in the shellfish industry, which is highly regulated for oysters especially, we have invested in a state-of-the-art traceability system to know exactly when they came out, exactly where they're going, exactly who caught them. So just to get back to your question as to would they smell a little bit? If they are, unless horseshoe crabs, in my experience, don't start smelling until probably maybe five or six days. And that also depends on proper temperatures. If one is left out into the sun, or you find one, or you see one, that's when it's going to start to have some sort of odor. But in the timeline that we propose, we are under best practice obligations to make sure that they are returned within ideally 24 hours, and that is the timeline. So there would be no odor for that.
Because I noticed in your, in the authorization, that it says that the permit holder is responsible for live release of the horseshoe crabs back in the same abeyment from which they were harvested. So if you're catching something up in Gloucester, you got to go all the way up there? And, I mean, that's a
Well, that's a
Or is it, and are they coming into Witchmere? Or are you taking them from Chatham and then going across?
Sure, sure.
This is a little bit remote, but I mean, I think it's part of the industrial process and the impact that people are concerned with.
Absolutely. That is a very important question, a great question, because you're correct. The logistics of something like that would be very difficult. So for example, we purchased horseshoe crabs for the bait market from horseshoe crabbers that were licensed from Plymouth. So it would be very difficult for us to purchase horseshoe crabs for the biomedical market from harvesters in Plymouth and have them bring them down here and follow that timeline. So as I mentioned earlier, the state of Massachusetts is separated into harvesting areas. So just for example, SC 47 is around Monomoy. SC 43 is adjacent, and it's right in front of Harding's Beach. So we are focusing more on crabs in Nantucket Sound. There may be a possibility of obtaining crabs from Barnstable Harbor, which is CCB 31, and that is probably the maximum distance. We don't foresee getting crabs at this point in time. This is the first year. We want to make sure that we don't make any mistakes. We want to make sure that we don't bite off more than we can chew. And so we are focusing our operations pretty much in Nantucket Sound so that we can meet those deadlines.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions from the public? Please address the board by signing in on the podium.
I've signed in. Sebastian Mudry. Wes Harwich, you've heard from Charles River Laboratories Corporate. You've heard from their attorney. You've heard from a harvester. And I was moved to respond to come here today because I didn't know how bad this situation was and how you have just been misrepresented. What Charles River Laboratories wants to do in Massachusetts has been denied in New York and in New Jersey because horseshoe crab populations have been decimated. That's also occurred in Chesapeake Bay in Delaware, where Charles River has been operating for quite I'd like to give you a reality orientation about why horseshoe crabs are in danger from Charles River Laboratories. But first, if I may just read a brief letter that appeared in last week's Cape Cod Chronicle. It's from somebody from Brewster, okay? I'm from Wes Harwich, but this is her voice, and she is pleading with you. Say no to horseshoe crab facility. Editor, I beg the leaders of the town of Harwich to say no to the biomedical company that wants to open a horseshoe crab bleeding facility in town. One-third of a horseshoe crab's blood is taken, while they say one-quarter. Many of the animals die during this process, and those that survive are thrown back to die a slower death. This industry is all about the money. It's cruel, it's wasteful, and it doesn't belong here or anywhere. Cape Codders celebrate our waters and the myriad creatures that live in them. Please say no to this horrible industry. And this is from Lisa Fort Doyle, Brewster. I don't know her, but I decided to do some research to see whether or not this is true. And I will cite to you from The Verge. Horseshoe crabs are in danger because everyone wants their blood. Demand for horseshoe crab blood for vaccine and drug testing has contributed to population declines. And if you have been a beach walker, beachcomber, for the last half a decade, you yourself will have noticed a decline in the horseshoe population right here in Arwhos on Cape. I've asked my friends, what have you seen over the last several years? And they've seen a diminution in horseshoe crab population because they're used for bait, they're used for fertilizer. And now this industry is going to come in. This is a photograph of their operation in South Carolina. And if I may later on, I'll pass this around to you so you can see there are about 100 horseshoe crabs that are being bled at a time. Horseshoe crabs are bled at the Charles River Laboratory in South Carolina. Timothy Fedeck, he was the photographer. If I may pass this around after I read a paragraph. Conservationists fear that horseshoe crabs, a 450-million-year-old living fossil, will be pushed to the brink of extinction because of the value of their blood to the pharmaceutical industry. Horseshoe crab blood provides a natural source of limulus amebasite LAL, which is used to test vaccines, drugs, and medical devices to ensure that they aren't contaminated with dangers with dangerous bacterial toxins called endotoxins. With hundreds of thousands of horseshoe crabs captured and bled of their milky-blue blood each year, conservation groups are now stepping up their advocacy efforts and taking legal action to help save horseshoe crabs and the other species that rely on them. If I may continue, but if I can just pass around this photograph. And you'll notice the workers, and you may want to ask, how much those workers get per hour to bleed those horseshoe crabs? Fortunately, there's already an alternative to horseshoe crab blood. In the late 1990s, biologists at the University of Singapore created a synthetic version of the LAL called recombinant factor C, R capital F capital C. Multiple studies show that RFC is just as effective as horseshoe crab-derived LAL and is currently commercially available. Some 60 countries have approved RFC for use, including the EU, the European Union, and China. But in the U.S., conservationists were dealt a setback last year when Maryland-based U.S. Pharmacopeia, USP, an organization that sets guidelines for the pharmaceutical industry, decided it needed to see more data before it could put RFC on equal footing with LAL. Now, it's approved in all European Union countries and China. It's been demonstrated to be effective, commercially viable. But there are companies such as, that do not want to admit this to happen.
Chairman, if I may, question the relevance of this discussion?
Companies can still opt to use RFC as a substitute for LAL. Eli Lilly already does, but only if they go through additional bureaucratic processes first. Many environmentalists
May I just interrupt you for a second? We're not debating the industrial economics of substituting one chemical for another. I understand your point. Did you want to add to your commentary as opposed to reading from? We could certainly circulate a link, that'd be fine.
Okay. Let's take a look at the permit that they got from the Division of Marine Fisheries. Because when I read this at first, it appears to be strict control of the numbers of horseshoe crabs taken per day and their return to the abeyments from which they were harvested. But look at the specifics in front of you. I did, when I read this carefully. The April 7 state permit.
Again, I question the relevance because the state has already granted the permit. The Division of Marine Fisheries, that's the forum. They have the jurisdiction, not this board.
That is what I'm attempting to address now, and the concerns
It's not relevant to this board tonight to address it.
It is relevant to the permit that it's right in front of you.
It's not relevant, the permit's been granted by the state, sir.
But I would like to clarify what I have just discovered.
It's not the forum to clarify anything tonight.
We're here to undertake the permit that they're requesting for the use of this building, the land use.
I would suggest to the speaker, if I may, Mr. Chairman, suggest to the speaker if there's an issue ideologically with the process or the permit, that he take it up with the Division of Marine Fisheries, not with this planning board.
No, that's going to be more of a runaround. We, you gentlemen and lady, are going to make Harwich the most hated town on Cape. Ask Wellfleet Audubon what they think about this proposal. Ask any other town.
I think we could ask Falmouth and Woods Hole Institute, where there is another processing facility, is my understanding located there? That does the same, engages in the same process?
And you're attempting to escalate it. To the detriment of the horseshoe crab population, I ask you to consider what has happened to right whales. They're on the verge of extinction. They will become extinct within my lifetime, and I'm 77 years old. You try to catch cod on Cape Cod? No, they've gone off into deeper waters. Lobster off to deeper waters as well. And this species, horseshoe crabs, are already under threat from overfishing, harvesting for bait, for fertilizer. And the pharmaceutical industry has alternatives. Charles River Laboratories suppresses the use of synthetic alternatives. What you have, what you have had
You made your point, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else from the public that would like to address the board? Please stand up and pronounce your name and address, and please sign in.
Yes, my name is Phil Girasi. I'm a neighbor across the street from the address and question. And my question is, on this special permit, in a year, if a year goes by, will they have the authorization to use another species for experimental use? Or is it just for horseshoe crabs?
It's a good question. I hadn't thought about that. The use is for scientific research or development. Now, generally, a permit like this will run with the land. So you could presumably do another research or development. another research or development use. But it seems to me that it's so aligned with taking blood from horseshoe crabs that the permit would almost be pretty specific to that.
And plus, they'd have to have authorization to conduct the research.
Well, I'm not even talking about a fishery. I'm just talking if somebody wanted to do another research or development use, how much does it have to be tied to not only horseshoe crabs, but some sort of research or development that deals with a fishery?
Right.
Yeah.
We really don't have a clear answer to that question.
Well, I think when you issue your permit, it would be to Charles River for research or development to draw the blood of horseshoe crab. So I would say that's what the permit's for. And I'm not sure another species is fungible. I'm not sure though what other fishery you take blood from.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, our permit from the Division of Marine Fisheries is for horseshoe crab biomedical dealer letter of authorization, just for horseshoe crabs. That's all that we're permitted to do.
We have no interest in doing anything else other than that.
Is there a particular, maybe, is there a particular concern?
Sure, that in a year from now, if things aren't going well, no more horseshoe crabs are available, can they start taking seals and shark and whatever and, you know, and start doing research with them? That's all. I was just curious about it. Not with specific horseshoe crabs. 55 years ago, I was an employee of the town of Harwich. My job was I was a lifeguard, and I used to step all over them, they were a pain in the ass. But now, if I knew they were so valuable, I would have collected them all, brought them home, and I probably could have bought Harwich port, you know? But, no, it was just a question of what happened. And then I have another short question is, if the material is being transported, I don't know how it's going to be transported, cases or whatever. And I say this specifically for another company I worked for that did research with animals. We flew them into a major airport in Boston, and then we took them to MIT, but en route, the crates were all broken apart, and then we were infested with many different type of animals in our airline terminal. So it's just kind of a question of what happens with the travel of the horseshoe crab? Should something break apart? What type of processes there to clean up the facility and that type of thing? That's really all I'm wondering. And if the lease or the property is transferred to another company, must they still retain horseshoe crab research? Or can they go to another species for research? That's all I have, just a couple of questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think it's less about the species, the general comment they would make, is there a variety of things a lessee or owner can do in the industrial district? So this isn't a requirement for perpetuity to undertake this use here. If somehow this didn't work and the lessee or the use went away, you know, the comment they made about fish processing, that could be done as a matter of right with no hearing in the industrial district. There are a variety of other uses you can do in the industrial district. I don't think there are any special accommodations, there aren't any special accommodations, I know, to do this cleanup. At the same time, it's going to take place inside, so I assume it behooves them to ensure for a variety of different economic and permitting and other purposes that they have a well-organized, clean site. And I'd be surprised if some sort of even local health department review wasn't required for this.
Right. Is that a contingency on your, or stipulation?
No, because they either have jurisdiction or they don't.
Right, okay. All right. I think the other question, yes, ma'am?
My name is Carol Kousha Stone. I live in West Harwich also. I understand all you folks were going to do is just grant the permit, but there really should be a moral focus on what is Harwich willing to sell its soul for the dollar bill? It definitely seems a trend in certain real estate transfers. The RFC is taking over the industry, so this is not going to last forever, whether be it there are no more horseshoe crabs or whatever. But the RFC, Lilly has shifted three of eight global drug sites to RFC and plans on adding more. And the part, they drain one-third of their blood and then return alive to the sea. The, up to 30% of bled crabs die prematurely. Also, it affects bird populations. The rufu red knot eats crab eggs on Delaware Bay and was listed as threatened under U.S. Endangered Species Act 2014. I've listened to everything, I have a relatively open mind, but it seems like you're on the wrong path. This, you know, protect the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Anybody else care to address the, please, sir, step up?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Belson. I'm resident at 44 Oak Street. Since 2004, I've had the pleasure of calling the town of Harwich as home. My wife and I have enjoyed raising our teenage children here and the nice, open space that affords of having kids. I'd like to speak from two perspectives. The first is as a Harwich resident, taxpayer, as a veteran, in support of this project. And I do hope that the board, again, comments from the public aside, focuses in on the merits of it as it pertains to the special use permit. But I do think that it's important to have a Harwich resident during the public comment period express support to this, for this project. And, you know, certainly someone who is looking at hopefully many more decades of living and retiring in this town, I think this is a rare opportunity in terms of not just having a unique business in town that is not your typical trades or the service industry. And I think it's, you know, there's often a lot of talk about the blue economy as a rising area of growth on the Cape, but unfortunately, up until now, or hopefully up until now, that's really been centered in Falmouth, in that area, Woods Hole. The second perspective is also as a small business owner. My partner is sitting there at the desk, Jamie Bassett. He and I have known each other since we were 18, when we both had hair and were about 50 pounds lighter. But I certainly can attest that from a business perspective that, you know, we're relatively young, and our whole focus is sustainability. You know, it doesn't make sense to go into something where a business is, you know, only looking at the short term. And as Jamie talked about earlier, that our experience previously with crabs was the bait market. And unfortunately, you know, it's a one-way ticket. There is 100% mortality with horseshoe crabs. And I do recognize that this isn't the forum for discussing, you know, ideological perspectives and pros and cons, but from a small business perspective, the, another attraction of this model and the biomedical industry use for horseshoe crabs is sustainability. And, you know, right now, this is the one and only source for this valuable testing component for health and safety in the biomedical field. And it's also in, you know, the nice thing about, it's strange to say, but in the state of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this is a highly regulated industry. You know, as Jamie, my partner, talked about that, we deal with shellfish. I mean, we have to know, document when a particular piece of oyster, where it was harvested, what time it was harvested, who harvested, what the temperature was, where it came, where it was delivered, and then who the end user is. With the letter of authorization that Charles River has received from the Department of Division of Marine Fisheries, it is licensed. There is, it is highly regulated, especially as a new entity in this industry in Massachusetts. The amount of record-keeping and eyes on this operation are going to be quite intense. And that's just not this year, it's the following year and the following year. And, you know, for us, again, the whole aspect of maintaining the care of the horseshoe crabs from harvesting to when they're brought to the facility, hopefully in Harwich, and then released, you know, we want those crabs to continue. That is a resource. But on the other side is that it's not just the harvesters. You know, this is a blue economy industry. This is not unskilled labor. This is, you know, an opportunity for locals like myself to get involved in an industry that ideally is not susceptible to the, you know, the ebb and flow and having to make money between Memorial Day and Labor Day. This has the potential for real, good jobs and annual growth. And again, the monitoring and the emphasis on the sustainability of the health of a horseshoe crab population, not just for the biomedical purposes, but for all of the ancillary components to the environment with the horseshoe crab. So again, both as a Harwich resident, taxpayer, and then also as the business that is going to be involved in this, I do hope that the board supports the and approves the application for the special use permit. Thank you for your time.
Please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Mason, and I live at 152 Gilbert Lane in Harwich Port. I'm a lifelong Harwich person, went to Harwich High, grew up here, kind of went off Cape, but came back with my family later on. You know, I read the article in the Chronicle, and I was moved at how great an opportunity is here in Harwich to have a facility like that over on Queen Anne Road. I mean, that is what that area was designed for, keeping it off of 28 and kind of in the area of the, you know, the industrial area in Harwich. And it's easy to get sidetracked on all the passions around the environment on the Cape, and I get that way too as well. But I think it makes a ton of sense to pass something like this and to help with employment here on the Cape too. Employing 25 to 30 people is a great opportunity to give some young folks at our, in our town and just in general on the Cape, some employment. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yeah, please, yes, step right up.
Sorry.
If I keep it to 300 words, would you let somebody from Falmouth have a shot? Or is it just for Harwich residents?
No, of course, this is a public, you don't have to be a resident. Please announce your name, though, and-
Yep, coming up, coming up. My name's Dan Gibson, and I've been doing horseshoe crab research since 1977. And I'm not by any means an apologist, I live in Falmouth, as I said, I'm not an apologist for horseshoe crab, LAL production companies, but it's sort of gotten a kind of, let's call it, no, never mind. The main thing is, the writing is on the wall, and I think every company that is collecting horseshoe crab blood is going to develop something else in the next few years. But the way I feel about it, and by the way, I once had a patent on growing horseshoe crab blood cells, but after 17 years, let it patent expire because it's just not an economical way to do things. So, yes, I understand horseshoe crabs are cheap, they're free, as a matter of fact. The question is, how well can they be managed and will they, we still have enough crabs for all the ecosystem needs that need to be met? And I just, I want to say that there is just too much passion about this. And I've looked at some of these articles, which are, I won't say fringe, but they're, it just sort of depends which side you come down on if you're looking at the economy or the science or a surplus of horseshoe crab. And that's what we will get. We give them about 10 years and they'll be back in great form. So I think that's more than my 300 words.
Thank you very much for making the journey to educate us. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address us? Well, do we have any further questions on the board? Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Do you know what your mortality rate is for your operation in Charleston?
Yes, we report a mortality rate to the Department of Natural Resources of between 2 and 3%.
Do they have a specific regulation for it can't be over?
No, of course, they monitor it every year. We work very closely with them on best management practices, and the mortality rate has gotten better. And, you know, I know that there are folks here that, somebody quoted, I think, a 30% mortality rate. The Atlantic Marine Fisheries has said the industry has about a 15% mortality rate. We think that is high. It's surely a lot lower than 100% to the bait industry. We also introduced a product about 15 years ago that is highly successful right now that uses 95% less horseshoe crab blood per test. We're the only ones that have that product. It's called a microfluidic process. And again, it's been highly successful. That's one of the things that we've done to, you know, keep the consumption down of the horseshoe crab blood. And we've always been good stewards of the crabs. And we were actively involved in having legislation enacted in South Carolina in 1991 to outlaw the bait industry. And the Atlantic Marine Fisheries Assessment, Stock Assessment Report that came out in 2019 shows that the southeast horseshoe crab population is stable to growing. And in the latest assessment, and I'm happy to leave you a copy of this, also showed that the population in the northeast got better from the last assessment that they did.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may-
Do you have any questions? Absence of a negative is a positive. Yes.
Just one final comment, Mr. Chairman. I think that, first of all, we've demonstrated that we've met the criteria for a special permit under our bylaw. Number one, number two, if this, very simply put, if the horseshoe crab species was endangered, I don't see how our Division of Marine Fisheries would give us a permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a procedural point. There was also a request for a waiver of site plan review. As we've discussed on a number of occasions, when a new use is proposed, remember, the use proposed during the original site plan review was warehouse and construction. review was warehouse and construction industry. So, this is a new use. They were technically trigger site plan review, but they're not making any changes to the site, they're not making any change to the building. Thus, it, I would maintain, it meets the standard for a waiver of site plan review, which it doesn't substantially change the relationship of the structures on site to other structures on site or onto neighboring properties. So, just to make that procedural point, a waiver has been requested, and I would support that waiver.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So, what's with the board? Your motion?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for PB 2022-09, Charles River Laboratories, and approve the applicant's request for a use special permit for scientific research and development.
Let's just close the...
Yeah, why don't we do that? Because you can actually have the discussion after the hearing is closed.
So, do I have a second? Second. So, to close the public meeting, Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Ann Tucker, aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry is aye, so it is closed. Is there any further discussion? Shall we tender that motion that you wanted to make then with the change suggested by Mr. Heidman? Or they cannot be inclusive?
I'm sorry, what, what change is that?
Well, to the site plan, the waiver of site plan review. If that is one of the stipulations already...
Yeah, that's actually, you know, in my staff report, I have some recommendations.
Yep.
That's included within the recommended motion. I do want to make one note, on the cover of the staff report, there's a footnote, one, I transpose the number, the number in the fourth line is 7, 7,480 square feet, not 7,840 square feet.
I did have one other question, and that was, did you see there was a quota, an annual quota of 150,000 crabs? Just, I was just curious.
So, I can speak to that?
Yeah, why don't you speak to that, Jim?
I can just, you have closed the public hearing, so just, if this is a sort of a...
This is a question of clarification.
Yeah, factual answer.
Right, question of clarification.
Sure, so that, that, I'll thank you for the question, this is basically a factual, a factual question. So, for the bait industry, there's a, there's a, the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries sets a quota of 165,000.
Okay.
And that's specific...
But there is no quota for the biomedical...
That is correct.
All right, all right, thank you, that's all I wanted to hear. A motion?
Want a motion?
Shall we? I think we're ready.
Okay. I'll make a motion, excuse me, that we approve the case number PB 2022-09, Charles River Laboratories, applicant potential DC, seeks approval of a use special permit for scientific research and development pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, Section 325-51A, property location 195 Queen Road, assessors ID 58-F1 and 2 in the INL zoning district with the following recommended conditions of approval. Number one, the project shall be undertaken consistent with the plans referenced in the application material set above. Number two, the decision shall run with the property. Number three, the decision shall not be effective until it is filed with Barnstable Registry District. Number four, the prior to occupancy and commencement of the use approved herein and to issuance of a certificate, certificate of use and occupancy for the same by the building official property owner shall satisfy all conditions of the decision in case number PB 2020-24, including without limitation requirements set out in Harwich Code, Section 400-18G relating to certificate of completion, inspection and submission of an as-built site plan. Said as-built site plan shall include, among other things, required storm, stormwater facilities approved under the town stormwater permit for the site issued by the town engineer.
You have a motion, you have a second? Any further discussion? Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Ann Tucker?
Ann Tucker, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry is aye, too.
Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Thank you, gentlemen. So, we move on now to public meeting, first section of which is the waiver of site plan for case PB 2022-11, Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank. Okay, that's right. Good, how are you? Very well.
Good, good evening, I'm Brian Weiner from Coastal Engineering, Civil Engineer. Chris Reiber from Cape Cod Five is here as well. Thank you for having us here.
I hope your feelings aren't hurt that the room is completely evacuated.
No, no one likes us.
I don't think it's anything personal, I, you know, don't get upset by that. Got our complete attention.
Thank you. So, we, we've been working to provide improvements to the drive-through ATM at Cape Cod Five, and so we've presented a proposed site plan that helps with traffic circulation, provides a third lane now for the drive-through ATM, and we, we think it's a significant improvement to the current condition. In conjunction with this work, we're also proposing the relocation of an ADA parking space from the north side of the building to the west side of the building. And we submitted, it's covered by two zones, and I know there was a summary memo about that, and so we, we do slightly exceed the 40% existing site coverage, pre-existing, and that will increase a little bit. If you note, in the northeast corner of the property, we're burdened by the Stop and Shop Plaza roadway, which plays into those numbers. And so, we think it's reasonable what's been requested, and we can answer any questions that you might have about our proposal.
Very good. Mr. Reiber, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I have prepared a staff report, and I think the site changes make eminent sense. There's a, if you look at the west side of the property, there, that drive aisle is being widened by essentially making the parking spaces deeper on that side. And then, there's additional pavement added to basically add a new dedicated entrance aisle to the, to the, I would call it the escape lane and also the ATM lane. It makes for a much better site circulation. There are a few spaces that are, have to be relocated on the site because of that. Those are being relocated to the kind of northwest portion of the site. I think this certainly meets the standard for a waiver of site plan review because it doesn't substantially change the relationship of structures on the site to other structures on the site or to, to neighboring properties. The rub here is, this is in a commercial district where the underlying site coverage allowed is 70%, but it's also in the Water Resource Protection District, where even with a forward-thinking type of stormwater management regime like Cape Cod Five has currently, and they're proposing to carry forward, that number goes down to 40%. So, their stormwater regime is, you know, they actually don't, they don't just manage their surface stormwater, they're actually treating the stormwater before recharging it to the, to the aquifer. Nonetheless, you know, they're exceeding that site coverage, they exceeded today slightly, and they're increasing even further. I think, as Brian said, a lot of that has contributed to that easement area, which serves Stop and Shop in the northeast part of the site, which frankly, they have no control over. Even if they wanted to reduce the width of that easement, it wouldn't be within their right to do so. It would have to remain paved to 24 feet, it's someone else's nonpossessory right. This is all a way of saying, I believe this requires a zoning variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think they have a good argument for that variance. Just because they need a variance doesn't mean they're not eligible for a waiver of site plan review. I think this meets the standard for a waiver of site plan review, but strangely, it also requires a zoning variance. So, with my staff report, I, you know, recommend granting this waiver of site plan review. It's effectively just over 2,000 square feet of coverage on a relatively large lot, which is required in this district anyway, so be happy to answer, any questions you have?
Any questions from the board? Bill?
Yeah, you're gonna have to change the Route 129 to 139.
There you go.
Well, that's actually 129 Route 137, so it's not Route 39. Yeah, so that...
It's Route 137.
It's Route... It's on Route 137 and on Route 139.
No, so this is, it's, it's address is 129 Route 137. It, it's address isn't Route 39.
Tricky.
See? Sorry.
We refer to things by numbers all the time, people like, what town is that in? The, I would, my name's Christopher Reiber, I'm the chief real estate officer, which means I'm in charge of the bank's real estate and not anybody else's. But I just wanted to point out, you know, we, we wanted, we're doing some work now to the interior of that building after many decades of not, and we, we want to take this opportunity to make some of these improvements, particularly during, when, when things were shut down during COVID, we had tremendous number of customers in the drive-up lane. We don't know that that will continue forever, but it really makes sense to us to allow people to drive by if they're not, if they don't need to wait in the queue, they don't need to wait in the queue to get out of the site. It is one way, and, and we think this is a safety issue, and also, we are updating the, the ADA parking and ADA access, ADA access to the building with a proper curb cut and, and a handicap door and, and these things. And we also intend to cut the paving, which is not shown on this plan, in order to extend to the sewer within the next year. We might actually bid that at the same time, because we, we have, we've just gotten our letter that says we have two years now, technically. I think we have a year and nine months left to do it. So, you know, if we're gonna go about that process, and we actually have to go right through the, kind of, that wetland, that water management area, actually, to get to the sewer, and, and of course, it's very deep, but, you know, we figured now's the time to do this, and we, you know, this is why we're here.
Very good.
I think David might have had a question.
Dave, sorry, we can't see you. Please speak if you have a question. Speak now, forever hold your peace.
I have a question, I just wanted to make sure that the applicant has verified that only one accessible parking space is required.
That, that's correct. It meets the standard, it's one based on the size of the facility and number of parking spaces.
I actually didn't see it on the drawing, it's on the west side.
Yes, it's actually, where the, where that large black dot is on the, on the, just the upper corner of the building.
Ah, okay, okay, gotcha. Yeah.
It's a one-to-one spot.
Okay, all right, got it. So, right by the door, basically.
Technically, that spot is not level enough, and it has an inclined walkway to the, toward the front door, but this, this will actually make that spot closer to the door.
Got it.
And provide a perfectly level, almost level parking space, which is...
As a multi-decade patron of the dentist who abuts you, I marvel at the circulation that, you know, never seems to be a problem, but that particular turbine area right there as people are pouring in off of, you know, the extension and going into the parking, so it's...
It's a busy place.
Yeah, it makes, it's a busy place, makes sense what you're doing, so, I don't know.
I have one more question.
Yes, Bill.
All, all the lanes are gonna be marked?
Yes, the... Sorry.
Yeah, no, it would be striped, marked, exactly like the plan.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chair, the, the building commissioner does have jurisdiction over ADA or accessibility issues, so I don't think the site work needs to go through a building permit, per se.
Right.
But the building commissioner will review the ADA accessibility issues, including, that whole connection between the entrance door and the spot, the parking spot.
Very good. So, why don't we entertain a motion?
Make a motion? Make a motion that in case number 2022-1, motion is to adopt...
11, I'm sorry, 2022.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, it's not our first. Adopt the recommended findings and conditions set out herein and grant a waiver of site plan review for the proposed site change of Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank, 129 Route 137 in East Harwich.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Dave Harris?
There were some conditions that went along with it.
Oh, do we, do we want to make those stipulations?
Yeah, I mean, there are different ways to go. Usually what I do is I'll prepare a draft motion, be as well if you want to use that rather than using the agenda. Here's the, here's the recommended conditions, they're relatively standard. Project shall be undertaken consistent with the plans referenced in the application material set out above. Decision shall run with the property, decision shall be recorded with the Barnstable Registry District, because it's Land Court land, with a copy returned to the planning board. And then, upon project completion, the applicant shall prepare and provide the planning board an as-built site plan with zoning compliance table, that is evidencing consistency with this decision, and one, and that is it.
Thank you for the clarification. So amended?
I will make a motion to amend my motion earlier.
Okay.
I have a second.
That's second. So, as the amended motion, any further discussion? We'll do the roll call vote, Mr. Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Ann Tucker, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Thank you, well, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
The last decision was fascinating. Everybody left.
Ours was kind of... It was.
It was easier. Yours are boring. Very standard, Andy. That's good stuff.
Nice, does it change your pace?
Well, someone supported you back there, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, there you go.
She appreciates Cape Cod Five.
So, the next item is, if you've all had a chance to read the minutes, I didn't see anything, but I wasn't kind of reading with a fine-tooth comb. Did anybody catch any typos or issues with March 8th or March 22nd?
I did not.
Okay. All entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Harris, approve the minutes.
Of March 8th and March 22nd.
Was that an aye?
Sorry, I thought you, so just March 22nd?
March, the 8th and the 22nd.
Uh, David Harris, aye.
Uh, David Harris, aye. Ms. Tucker?
Ann Tucker, aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Briefings, correspondence, advisory opinions, well, we don't have anything, because Mary's not here, for the HDHC, Board of Appeals, ZBA, anything?
We have agendas from both the HDHC and Board of Appeals. There really was nothing of, you know, of special interest to the planning board in either of those agendas.
All right. Well, is there any other business before the board?
The only thing I would suggest, or, you know, recommend maybe when we get the agenda is the matter you've just heard, Cape Cod Five, whether you want to provide a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals when they entertain a, a variance for Cape Cod Five. You don't have to do anything now, but just, you know, think about that.
Keep it on the radar, right?
Say that again, John. Yeah, Cape Cod Five will require a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Because the increased coverage they're proposing gets them into variance territory, they're not complying with the bylaw. So, when it's finally noticed on the Zoning Board of Appeals agenda, it's... So, when it's finally noticed on the zoning Board of Appeals agenda, it's certainly within your jurisdiction to provide a recommendation to the zoning Board of Appeals. So, just think, you know, about whether you would want to provide some sort of recommendation or special comment to the zoning Board of Appeals on that matter.
Wouldn't our approval tonight effectively send that message?
Maybe, but you're acting on something differently. So, you acted on a, the standard for a waiver of site plan review is are you substantially changing the site? That doesn't necessarily mean you're in support of a waiver.
I see what you mean, yeah.
I mean, sorry, in support of a variance.
Yeah, got it.
Thank you.
So, what do you think?
Gave me a lightning pass.
Yeah, this is a little deep immersion, the first one, and we usually don't get so far into the weeds or it gets so complicated, a typical meeting, but I appreciate your fortitude and anticipation here. Thank you for joining us. If we have any other business, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Harris, motion to adjourn.
Was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Just kidding. I just want to say that I hope, I hope that the applicant for the, you know, with horseshoe crabs, that after each crab gives blood, they give him a cup of cranberry juice and a cookie.
You didn't include that as a condition, I'm sorry.
Should have been a condition.
Should have told me.
Well, I didn't want to be pushy. So, anyway, aye, David Harris.
Thank you, David. Ms. Tucker?
Ann Tucker, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Bill Stoltz?
Bill Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye.